This is the hybrid meeting for Inland Wetlands meeting. Good evening, my name is Keith Romano. And I like to call this meeting Dior. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for town of Monroe. It is November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is, uh, what do we got for time?
One oh two.
One oh two P M. Sounds good. Let everyone please rise and to recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here, present, starting myself, Keith Romano, chairman. Eric Lindstrom, vice chairman.
Here.
Brian Kelly, secretary.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Zoning inland wetlands enforcement officer.
President.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also, um, sorry, I would also want to just add that Jim's de Mayo,
our town engineer is on as well.
Well said. Jim, Jim is here. Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands mission statement, the objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands that water courses within the town of Monroe. Meeting procedure, please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, public act twenty-one dash one. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body, if they spin remotely, shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. Protocol for public hearings to have the applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that all applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments, and the meeting will be open for public comment. I'll ask that all comments made to the chair or commission, after any and all comments pro and opposition of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments who are questions direct, or a timeline of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in the best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con, specifically inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless, uh, otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna add, um, can vote to add by two-thirds. Vote, um, I W C dash two oh two three dash oh nine, file one four six three for seven oh seven Monroe Turnpike, an application by the town of Monroe, um, owned on with property owned by Saint Jude's Roman Catholic Church Corporation for the subdivision referral for, uh, three lots, three lot subdivision.
Okay, um, what was the number again, sorry? The two thousand?
Two thousand twenty-three dash oh nine, file one four six three for seven oh seven Monroe Turnpike, odd subdivisions for subdivision.
A motion to add to the agenda?
Motion to add that to the agenda?
You got a motion, Mr. Lynch, on a second?
Second.
Second, here, Mr. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passing unanimously. Where are we gonna, where, where is this gonna be, under?
So I would say we have to put under subdivision referrals, which is underneath application determination. It says none, that's where we're gonna add it.
There we go. I didn't see that. Okay, so now we're at, um, no, we're not. Uh, this is the period of, uh, general public participation. If anybody in the public, uh, either online or in chambers would like to address the commission for something related to wetlands that's not on our agenda now or soon to be on our agenda, we speak. Off to related activities, application determination, I W C twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, file one four six two, seven eighty-one Main Street, Town Line Auto Body. The Adamani Family Corp. proposal to construct a new twenty-four foot by ninety-four foot building as well as removal and relocation of storage containers within the upland view area.
So before we start, can you just explain, Cheryl, what is the new information we have on this?
Sure, um, so I was gonna say that, um, since the application was submitted and since you've had your packets delivered, we've had two new exhibits. The first one is engineering comments and bond estimate, um, and a revised site plan. And then, uh, the exhibit five is just a, a quick change in the narrative to the application. It's just a clarification about the building, um, that originally it was said it was an addition to the building, but it actually is a separate structure, which there is an eight-foot distance roughly between the two structures existing and proposed, so.
Do we ignore the first one?
The one in your.
They did on the thirtieth?
The one in your packet, yeah. So you have the new, the new revised one, and then, and literally it's just the change in the wording as this, this structure is separate, new addition.
This is a determination?
Right, so it's coming in for receipt, and you can determine whether you wanted to go to a public hearing or not.
Okay.
It's on, um, you know, the review and the presentation. If you think it's significant enough, it warrants a public hearing.
Gotcha. Good thought. Okay. Guys ready? Well, oh, sorry.
Chair, can you hear me? It's, uh, Chris Russo with Russo Rizzo LLC.
Hear you, Chris.
Great, um, good to be before you tonight, Chair Commissioners. Chris Russo with Russo Rizzo LLC, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. Sorry, I can't be there in person, uh, I got held up, so I'm, I'm coming you, uh, coming to you from a hallway at Stratford Town Hall. But here tonight for, for seven eighty-one Main Street, uh, Chair, you probably remember this, because, uh, there was a application a few years ago for this property. This is the location of Town Line Body Shop, uh, which has been a staple along with the Potamani's, uh, in Monroe for decades upon decades. Um, and what we're looking to do is, uh, and, uh, sorry for the confusion, but the, what we're looking to do is to construct a new building, uh, it's a detached building to the rear, uh, of the building. Um, and the, the Potamani's have been working hard, uh, and have gotten licensed to, um, do basically like calibration repairs, um, you know, new vehicles today, uh, they're, they're part computer now, and, uh, they have a lot of, uh, systems that need fine tuning over time, and, um, the, uh, calibration of those systems is something you have to be trained in, you have to, uh, uh, go through all sorts of training to get the appropriate licenses, uh, to then work on these systems. Um, and, uh, it's, it's incredibly sensitive work, uh, and, uh, to make sure that you, you know, calibrate it, I mean, these things have to be precise. And so that's why actually the building is detached, um, it's going over existing impervious area, but it's a detached building, um, that's to control, I mean, even things like light can impact the calibration, so there's a limited amount of windows, uh, in, in, in this proposed building, um, just to make sure it's controlled enough so they can calibrate it. But from a site development perspective, what's happening is we're locating this building over existing impervious. If you know the site, there are several storage containers, um, that are there, and with this, um, new building, we're able to remove, um, three containers that are located, um, to the rear of the impervious area, and then also where the building's going, um, there's a storage container that's, uh, being removed, um, and a number of carports. So what we're really doing is almost sucking the site in a bit, the, the, by bringing, by eliminating those storage containers and, uh, or at least some of the storage containers in these carports, and bringing it into, you know, a modern, new building over impervious area. Um, and again, as I mentioned earlier, this, this property was, uh, we went to inland wetlands, uh, it was two thousand and nineteen, I believe, um, where we put in a number of improvements to make sure that there was a clear delineation between the impervious area where the work is all done, and then the area that's beyond that, um, uh, which is where the wetlands are. And my client did that, put in those measures to protect the wetlands, uh, those will obviously remain with this proposal, um, and continue to make sure that there's this delineation, um, and, and that the wetlands are protected. But we think it's a tremendous improvement, you know, trying to reduce the number of structures, you know, by getting rid of these storage containers and pulling it into a building that will, you know, of course, be constructed to, to code. Um, it's really the only location for this building. Um, the southern side of the site, uh, if, we couldn't put a building there, um, it, it would prevent access to the rear of the property, it also would frankly be closer to the wetlands, because the wetlands, um, turn to the south below, uh, below the site. And then to the north, we have our drainage structures, um, and so it just really, we couldn't place it to the north of the existing building either. So this, this is really the, the, the only location, and we think the best location for it. Uh, our engineers there, Doug DeVesta, uh, as well as the Potamani's, to answer any questions you might have on it. So yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one for you, Chris. With regard to the, uh, I note on the drawing, it says, please help hay bales down gradient of excavation. What kind of excavation are you gonna do, um, on that, uh, western side?
So do you wanna, is that something you could speak to Doug?
Remember, this is a, a hearing determination, so.
Yeah, I just.
All right, no, it's okay, I'm just like, let's not get too deep with any details, we're not really open yet.
Good evening, my name is Doug DeVesta, fresh engineer. The excavation will be for the foundation for the buildings, to put in the footings and foundations, that's all. So another excavation proposed. And that's why we have the hay bales or, or waddles that would be down gradient of, on the south side there, and also on the west side.
I see there's three trailers there along the hay bales, is the, the building we're talking about putting in. I have no problems with anything you said, I, I notice, I know you guys are good players, and I'm all about it, but I just didn't wanna, I wanna know what kind of disturbance you're gonna do there. I didn't think you needed to do any excavation to put those trailers there.
Well, not, it's not, it's not for the trailer, it's for, it's for the building.
Right, but the building is a good twenty-five feet away from that area.
Boy, still you gotta, you still have access around the building. So we're putting the hay bales along the edge of the, um, hide, hide the trailers there, the storage, the storage containers.
So you're not actually gonna be in the wetlands, though?
No, we're not.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, Commissioner, we just wanted to make sure that the hay bales were at the very outer edge of where we're, you know, both doing the building, but also moving around the containers.
There's just big and frost walls, and just, they're just big and frost walls, and they just need to put, to have a way to get the excavator out.
Got it.
The only thing that, so we're calling this service, this cer, the surface now pervious?
Impervious. So it was impervious, we're taking away impervious areas, we're, well, we got impervious areas now, the trailer, the storage containers, so, now we're taking, we're taking three away, some of those are impervious areas, the, the trailer that's impervious, the, um, this, the storage building right behind the, right behind the building.
Yep.
Which is, it's hard to see, but it's in the, it's in the, we have a storage container here, and we also have the carport there, so that's all impervious areas that we count it, and we're putting back less impervious areas than we are taking away.
Impervious, to, which is compacted gravel.
Right.
Process. And the roof of the building is gonna shed a hundred percent.
Right.
Metal roof, right? And the ground is what, ninety-five?
Yeah, ninety-five, yeah.
I, I mean, I, I think, you know, I would like to see maybe the first two inches captured be added to the, my opinion, first two inches of rainfall.
Why two inches?
Because I don't think you have designs like twenty-five or a hundred year storm or anything like that.
Specifically, the Storm Water Quality Manual for the city of Connecticut is one inch for water quality.
Oh, is it one inch? Okay.
An inch or five.
Oh, that's fine, one inch, I, I wasn't saying, I didn't have to, because, like, we're, I don't know if it's required, like, it hasn't been determined yet by anybody to us that this doesn't require anything, you don't have it on the plan, so whatever the, whatever the.
Uh, James and I have been talking about it, Jim, James has also prepared a letter, and I proved that we're not increasing impervious areas, so he was satisfied with, with what my calculations were, that there's no increase in impervious areas, therefore, no increase in runoff, also providing any kind of storage out there for runoff. We had a hard, we had a hard enough time to find a specific area for repair that we did back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty.
Right.
So there's way nowhere yet on that site that would be, probably able to handle that kind of, you know, to meet the requirements of any kind of quality volume in terms of putting into this kind of a container underground. We don't have any areas to put anything surface-wise.
Even for one inch?
For an inch, or that's, you know.
Is it, is it, is it my?
If I may. Um, so for, for commercial properties, the only time where stormwater management would be required would be when there is a, uh, the proposal is increasing impervious on site due to the fact that they're not, or they're essentially removing any impervious, so, um, that the regulations don't require any stormwater management with this current proposal, because they're actually reducing the amount of impervious on site.
Oh, so the coefficient, so, so when you do the coefficient for the, for the ground, right, and then the roof is a hundred percent, right, it's a hundred percent shit, it's a metal roof, right? Sheds a hundred percent.
But the.
It's still, it's still a net, there's no gain?
The coefficient is.
Yes, the, the, there's no, there's no difference between, um, a metal roof, an asphalt roof, uh, asphalt pavement, concrete, uh, they are all considered impervious, where basically you have to imagine that no water is getting through them at all, so, so they're all considered the same.
Five percent, I thought five percent got through asphalt.
That's.
At least when I went to school, at least when I went to school, I remember there being one, something for asphalt, and then something for.
We use a coefficient, James can back me up, it's coefficient ninety-eight for, for any impervious surfaces.
Is it, I, I don't remember, you know, I'm not, I don't practice this, I'm just saying, I remember there was a difference, and we had another application recently where we addressed the same thing, the roof is gonna shed off, like, you know, whatever, a large portion, and some of it sheds off of the parking lot, but the other thing too is, you're also, again, I'm just, you know, spitballing ideas here, because, you know, we're not really in review, you know, not really in front of us with the application yet, this is a determination, but you also have the, the graciousness, I guess, of being able to do something so close to the wetlands, that if this was a brand-new piece of property, this stuff wouldn't be happening. You know, it's grandfathered in from, from all, you know, from, from all these years, so, which is great, you know, we're, you know, we're not complaining about it, but, but at, at some point, you know, when do we get to bring a little bit more, you know, into, like, I don't wanna say compliance, I don't know if that's the right term, but, like, if you're gonna do something like this, it, I, I don't know, maybe, again, maybe I'm, maybe I'm off the mark with this. And if you're saying that the roof and the ground is the same, there's the, there's really, you're right, there is no change.
Actually, reduction runoff.
But then how are you controlling the, how are you controlling the, uh, velocity?
I mean, it's a flat site, so there's way no velocity's out there, so.
You're gonna have downspouts with leaders, right, and that's gonna.
But we can have a just sheet flow off the roof too, without having any kind of gutters on there. I have, I haven't seen, I don't think the building has been just totally designed yet.
Okay.
I can see no footprints, I don't know what's happened.
Well, listen, just things, just things to consider for.
Also, back in twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we, we also provided wetlands mitigation.
I remember.
For this commission, so, so we did, so we did do some mitigation on that property to, to satisfy the commission, and that has been planted, as Chris mentioned, and we did provide the, uh, you know, a demarcation between the wet, the upland view area, the wetlands area, and, and the, and the, and the building itself, or activities on the site.
I think you wanna proceed. What, what kind of property, like, what's the property to the, to the north and south? Like, what's on either side of those?
Uh, to the, to the south, we've got, it's what, Seonp, or something? It's a, yeah, Seonp, uh, uh, that, that, right?
Snell Underground Station.
Yes, the Snell Underground Station is to the south of us, that list is just wetlands and, and, behind it, north of us, is, uh, another commercial site.
Cheryl, did you bring the, what I asked about for Edgerton?
I have it, yep.
Did, we did, we had to cross the street. Okay, just do something, same thing, my guess.
I think so, or last year, yeah, early this year.
So, right, so that was an application that was from twenty twenty-two to construct a eight thou, eight thousand four hundred square foot warehouse building, um, with parking and new rain garden. It was approved.
Where did you do a public or regular meeting for it?
Um, actually doesn't.
Just for reference.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could help us.
Didn't say. Yeah, usually it says what kind of, uh, meeting it is, it doesn't say here, hold on, I can probably just look around, but.
I'm leaning towards a regular meeting, because there's nobody around, but that's what's being.
So it did, did have a public hearing?
It's public.
That's my thought, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's in here. There was a public hearing.
On Monroe, and.
Yeah, it's right near us.
There's a lot of them.
They're closer.
I don't think anybody's gonna come, but one of those. Third, third citizen's home, right?
I would agree. I'll, I'll motion for a public hearing.
Uh, Christian Kelly for public meeting.
Okay.
Second, Christian, all in favor?
All right, aye.
All right, guys are all set.
And what's that gonna be?
Thanks, everyone.
It could be at the next meeting, if you get all your filings in and your, the mailing's done and everything, but we have another one at the, uh, first, first, the first, second week of, uh, second Wednesday of, uh, December.
December thirteenth is our next meeting, yep. Just for clarification, um, sorry, it was Commissioner Kelly who motioned?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lisbon, you second? There's an application open.
All right, so now we'll go to subdivision report recognition plan and zoning, which is two thousand and twenty-three dash zero nine dash fourteen sixty-three. Um, for the, uh, seven, seven, uh.
Seven oh seven Monroe Turnpike, sir?
Good evening, everyone, can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, is, uh, this is Luke Morrow, um, Solely Engineering Office in Monroe, Connecticut, um, speaking on behalf of the applicant, which is the town of Monroe. Uh, I'm not sure if, is Bill, Bill Holdworth there or not?
Is.
Okay, so I can, Bill, I can, I'll talk through quick, and if there's anything Bill wants to add, you know, that's fine. So we're here tonight, um, it's Cheryl, as I mentioned, um, it's, uh, basically, uh, wetlands referral for subdivision, um, for the Saint Jude School property, um, which the town is in the process of negotiating, uh, purchase for, uh, as we understand it, a referral is required, uh, to wetlands for the subdivision before planning and zoning can act. At this point, we submitted some, you know, minimal information, uh, we are not aware, based on G I S data, uh, and a look at the N R C S web soil survey, we're unaware of any wetlands on the site, uh, however, in talking with Cheryl, she did ask that we hire a, a wetlands, um, scientist, soil scientist to go out there, just to take a look, to confirm if there are any potential wetland soils on the site. So we have, um, engaged someone to get out there to take a look, however, they haven't been able to get out there, um, just quite yet. So we're in the process of trying to get that answer, um, for everyone, but preemptively, uh, we are hoping to, um, be placed on the agenda for next meeting, um, for, you know, to, for the formal referral and decision, uh, in order to keep the process rolling so that we can, um, you know, move this town project along, uh, and then get, you know, make our way in through planning and zoning rather than waiting another month. So, um, as we see it, um, and Cheryl can correct me if, if, if I misinterpret, um, I believe if, if our soil scientist comes back with, like, saying there's no, um, wetlands on the site, we can probably, um, remove this application, um, and, and it can just be an agent review, uh, with the referral stating that there are no wetlands on the site. However, um, in the case that it comes back and there are, you know, we'd like to be, you know, formally present, uh, that and get the referral, um, at next month's meeting. Um, just, just in terms of what the scope entails, um, it's simply a subdivision, there's no earthwork, there's no construction, no paving, no utility installations, nothing associated with the application, it's simply just the filing of a lot line revision for a new subdivision so that the, the town could eventually purchase that school property. And that's, that essentially entails what the referral would be for, and we can certainly answer any questions anyone we have.
So Luke, you're requesting a public hearing, so we don't have to have a determination?
No, uh, no, no public, no, I guess, no, I don't know if it would require.
You wanna be on the agenda for, if you potentially have an issue, you have to do a determination, I think, right?
If there's wetlands.
If there's a wetlands impact, if there's some kind of wetlands, which I don't think anybody really thinks there is, but.
No, correct, and I guess, and, and our, our question is, as, since it's just a referral to wetlands, and there's no actual physical construction work that would occur along with a subdivision, uh, I'm not, we weren't sure if it actually has to go to a public hearing, or if it could just be, you know, the, the I W C commission that makes that, uh, referral that.
We, we don't wanna make that decision at the next meeting.
Say again?
We don't wanna make that decision at the next meeting, right? If it's unclear at this point, so if you were to, if it's a potentially something that has to be notified, you might as well do it now and have the, the four weeks to get it all in filed, so that if it, if it's deter, if, if it looks, you know, you know, we have a determination, so you might as well just do it to the, you know, the highest degree, so everything's covered.
Okay.
Right?
So, so, so the opinion of the commission is, notice it in, in the case that we have to present it, and if not, we could just remove.
Right, exactly, same thing, you can remove it, you don't have to come in if, if there's nothing there.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Off the agenda, all right, so.
Just so I understand, that I'm interpreting it the right way, we're just talking about the property being subdivided so that the, the former school building can be sold to the town, but that the church and the, the house can be, can be left with the diocese at bridge port?
Yeah, I guess you're gonna make it pre-prob, yeah.
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
So there would be no physical, it's a little bit of a conundrum here, right? There's no physical work, um, so it's kind of a gray area, uh, whether or not there is a wetlands impact associated with just, you know, placing a new subdivision property line, um, you know, kind of a, an odd case here, but we'd rather be safe than sorry, so we can move the process along, we just wanted to present that tonight, and, you know, and, and just get on, get ahead of the game, and get on for the next, next month's agenda if needed.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Public hearing.
Okay.
For a public hearing.
On the receipt of the application.
Determination? Or? Yeah, no.
Or here.
We are going to, I have a motion for a public hearing, uh, for next meeting, for the application for seven oh.
Seven oh seven Monroe Turnpike.
Yeah.
Subdivision referral.
Yeah.
I'll make, I'll make a motion for a public hearing.
A motion for public hearing from Christian Kelly, taken by Christian Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, see you, see you next month, maybe, maybe not.
Take care, have a good night.
Um, so if there's no well and impact, this. Yeah, so I'll agree with that, yeah, they're gonna, so they're gonna determine. We'll figure it out.
They're gonna get a soil scientist to delineate wetlands there are.
The other thing I meant to, we talked about, to bring it up, if, if there's also, like, nothing, like, if, if it shows up, that is, well, Bill, let's, let's bring this topic back up, right? If it's, if there's, if something shows up, and it's so small, like, it's really, like, just, it's. it's like off, it's off the property, but.
We got fifty feet of upland review area.
And you could, you'll just hand, you'll just notify us and handle it.
So, well, your, your, your report and recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission is that it's, that it's not significant? That it's, that it's, there's no end.
Yeah, so you can make a referral.
I can, I can write it up for you and you can modify it as you see fit. It's almost like a draft resolution, you can.
Let's put it this way, okay? If you, if, if the report comes in at the end of the week and there's no wetlands, right? It just automatically moves down, right? We don't have to do anything, correct?
Well, there's nothing to regulate.
There's nothing to regulate, so it's just going to move down like, if it comes in and we're like, there's no well lines on the property, but there's a little bit of upland review area, we're going to say you, you could just move it, move it along, whatever needs to do to move it along, if it mean, you know, right, are we? This is, this is a, this is a team decision, but, well, except for that, again, depending on where it comes in.
That's what I can run until it comes in, so I hear what you're saying, but.
Well, I'm trying to give her some latitude to do this by us determining what we're okay with and latitude level.
Well, since we voted for it to be a public hearing, I think it probably has to open and then it, you know, in theory, there's very little to talk about, there are very little.
You could just approve it with her.
Concern about, we just move it along.
We can, we can, you can write up your, your recommendation.
Right.
And then we pass it to the.
So what, so what's going to trigger that? Like literally, like one square foot is in an upland review area? Like, like I'm saying, like, where, where do we want to really be concerned? You know what I'm saying, it's, if there's no wetlands, let's say there's no wetlands on the property, but it happens to be on the next property and there's a hundred foot, we have a hundred feet review, but there's like a, you know.
Right.
There's a thousand square feet of upland review, not wetland, just upland.
No, I got you, I just think we should. Still have a public hearing?
Yeah, okay, I'm looking, I'm asking.
The regs, this is what the regs read for subdivisions. Any person intending to subdivide or re-subdivide a previously approved subdivision or re-subdivision on land or any portion of it that contains a regulated area shall first apply to the commission for recommendation report to be submitted to planning and zoning.
Has any on it according to that?
We should go through it.
Yeah, all right, good.
From my perspective, if that's the case, if that's the scenario, the public hearing has been voted on, so it has to open, it'll flow as quickly. And that's still a lot faster than finding out that there is an issue and then voting in the next meeting to have a public hearing.
So we're on, we're on the fastest track right now.
I think that's.
I think rather the fault of having a public hearing and not need it than drag it out.
If there's none on the property, what, nothing, they're just going to take it off the agenda.
Yep. Makes sense.
Yes. All right, so deliberation session, non-public hearings, non-bond release, reduction of gas, non. I W C activity reports enforcement, I W V, twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, uh, fourteen sixty-one, five eighty-four, Musso Road. Mate, owner going in.
Mr. Chairman, so, um, we had a, um, concerned complaint that the water body had been filled in. I went out to inspect and, um, it's just not existing anymore. Um, as you can see in the picture in your packets. Further research showed that there was a violation going back to twenty ten, it seems like, finally got resolved around twenty sixteen.
Same owners?
Um, yes, so, and the, in your handouts tonight, eleven by seventeens that you see, um, they're stacked there. You have two, two maps, first one, um, which one's on top, right? The first one is the remediation plan or a section thereof, but shows roughly a forty by twenty-five foot, if they call it a pond. And, um, I also think I gave you the aerial photo of it in your packets as well. So you got an aerial, you have the, you have the plan. So then, twenty twenty-two, owner came in and got a permit from wetlands, I'm sorry, not from wetlands, from, uh, zoning and building, put in an above ground pool, and that's the second sheet that you have.
Yep.
So there's a little bit of whiteout, as you can see where that pond was, and they came in and got a permit for the pool. And then I think that's when all that kind of happened. They filled it in, they put the pool in, it's my understanding, it's my assumption, because the plan shows it's gone, so between twenty twenty, which is the aerial photo, last aerial photo we have in twenty twenty that shows the, the pond, the water body there, between then and now.
And they have a building permit for the pool.
And a zoning approval as well.
And a zoning approval, and they turned in a plan that had whiteout on it. And our, and our planning and zoning.
So the, the zoning official at the time, I, it signed off for wetlands, but didn't, I don't know, that, looking at the plan, they didn't see that there was one, so something like that, I wasn't here for the, for it, but.
The applicant, though, whited out a survey, turned into town, which is fraud, right?
Yep, so that's my, so that, so at this.
At the original?
At this point. Pardon me?
At the original, it was turned in with a whiteout?
This is the original. That has the, has the stamps on it.
And that went to planning and zoning?
Nobody quite.
Or no, no?
It was over the counter, I mean, it was an above ground pool, so we, we do those every day.
By staff?
Correct.
Right.
So.
Straightforward.
The point, the point was I sent a notice of violation, not a cease and correct, I just wanted them to, the person to come before the commission to talk about it so that we wouldn't make, make many assumptions, we would have the answers. I, I don't think.
Obviously not, they know that there was, was it determined they were going to be here tonight?
I.
Did they say they were going to be here tonight?
No, I never heard from the owner.
You never heard back from that?
Never heard back from the owner, so.
No response.
I, I, that's why, I, you know, I asked him very nicely in the, in the letter to come in to kind of have a chat about it. So the next step would be, the next step would be like a cease, a cease and correct.
Citation?
A, a cease and correct would most likely, and then, then we can have a show cause hearing and we could, you know, then.
Correct.
Correct. So cease and correct means just, you know, you, you have to stop, you know, to stop, which is stop, you know, and come in and correct the problem. The correct part is more.
You basically have a star on the, so we, we would, if they did nothing, I believe, right? Then there'd be a, uh, something goes on their deed saying they've got a violation that's never been fixed, right? That's what, I mean, you're not, you can't force anybody to do anything.
You press that, hold on, no.
But you put this.
What?
The original.
The whiteout, that's the plan, yeah.
Yeah, we'll determine that we want to fix. Right? Right?
Sure, I mean, that's, so.
If we determine that we want to fix.
Right.
And then if they do nothing, it just gets filed on land records if there's a, there's a violation, right? So if they ever try to sell the house and they do their due diligence, they'll know that their pool.
I would have to see legally if we had to have some kind of a citation hearing, a formal citation.
Right, right. I know your stuff.
But there, there are, that is, one of the remedies is to file something on the land records, there is something like that. I just have to find a procedure that, to get us to that point, but yes, that could, that's something that.
Taking a pool.
I mean, I don't know what the legal ramifications are of whiting out a plant and turning it in. It's like, that's bizarre.
That's, it's just, that's, that's all I have, so that's all I have to go on.
They put the pool in where the pond is, like they took each other. So you can't, like, put the pond back without impacting the pool, so.
The pool's, the pool is literally touching wetlands.
Yeah.
We wouldn't allow a pool within twenty-five feet.
Of course not, that's what I'm saying, so. Yeah, this is, that's, this is a real problem.
It's a problem, but it's not a lot, it's not a lot of work for us. You know, whatever the next step is that you can take, I, I'm saying I'm in favor of taking it.
Okay.
So I don't know if we vote on that or if we disagree to do it.
I was, I mean, I was, I could, I can take that step, yeah, I don't think you have to vote on it, I said, it's not, it's just I wanted him to come and have a chat and he, he missed the deadline anyway, October thirtieth to, to contact the office, so usually in the course of those things, I just issue my next, my next order.
We're not, we're not playing, you know, this is like a, oof, I, I didn't understand, this is a blatant.
Previous violation, and then they don't even come into a nice.
Right, he all the time, he went through a violation already, so they moved through rules to get it through.
Right.
So, any, anyway, I just wanted to make you aware and.
And right across the, it's right across the board. It's like right here, it's not like he's on the outskirts of town.
You know, I can get away with this.
You're right at town hall campus, basically. All right, um, so now we're on permitted use as a right, I P U, two thousand twenty-three. Beaver Dam removal maintenance, Gusky Pond, that's going to be you, James?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so, um, we had a beaver dam in Gusky Pond that is currently retaining about, uh, almost about two feet of water and base, you know, based upon the area of Gusky Pond, I'm, I'm anticipating almost like five million gallons of water. Some very significant amount of water, um, it's causing some, uh, you know, getting some reports of potential property damage, concerns by a lot of residents upstream. Um, so I'm in the process of trying to remove this dam safely. Um, because my concern is once we push it or start to remove some of the dam, that water's going to go, and once water starts going, it's could just take the rest of the dam, so I'm proposing some sheet piling to kind of reinforce the back of the dam, but in order to get down there, we have to bring in some fill, um, which is obviously going to be directly adjacent to the wetlands, which is why Cheryl and I thought it was appropriate to at least put it on, on this commission's radar that we're doing it, because if residents or people start seeing us with a dump truck and dumping a load of material, I'm, I'm estimating like a, a load and a half of material in order to give us a pad so that we can, um, drive the sheet piles in, um, there is a flat spot, but it's, we, we can't access it with a machine at the moment. So I'm just kind of trying to create a little path for a machine to sit and, and, uh, drive the sheet piles in. The intention right now, um, is to leave it, s- and so we're going to stabilize it, everything like that. But this way, um, and we're actually going to leave the sheet piles in so that in the event and when the beavers do reconstruct this dam, we still have that reinforcement in place so that we can continually try to stay on top of it and hopefully not let it get this bad. But again, with, with this amount of disturbance, right up against the wetland in plain view, we thought it was appropriate to just make sure everybody was aware of what we were trying to do, even though we do think it falls within the purview of our existing permit.
This is no property?
Yes, sir, yes.
Seems extreme to me.
Uh, which part?
Oh, oh, going through sheet piling and dumping fill next to the pond and, you know, where I've released a couple dams myself, and if you just take a little bit of time, do it, you know, pretty, you know, nicely, you don't have to do anything, you just got to get a machine down to the water level. Look, I don't know if this is like the latest and greatest process involved of, but I can't imagine how many farmers over the years have built pilings so they can release a, you know, a dam that the beaver's built on their property, like, are we, are we getting a little crazy?
Um, the, the problem is, again, with the sheer amount of, of water that's being retained behind it, again, it's, it's literally about two vertical feet of.
Right. I believe it.
It's, so it's not a little bit, if, if this was six inches, maybe even a foot, I, I would agree, but due to the, the sheer amount, um, I have concerns and what ends up happening directly after Gusky Pond is the, the waterway narrows a lot. So it, it has the potential to severely impact, i- if we, if this thing goes too fast, is my concern. A- and, and it has the, the impact to damage a lot of properties very quickly. Um, so this may be belt and suspenders, um, I'd rather do that and, and work a little slower in order to prevent that, especially because a lot of the other properties too are not even in Monroe. So.
I see, I understand a lot of, now, who does all this, is all Public Works? Or you have to hire like someone to come in with a sheet piling rig?
So, so yeah, uh, Public Works is going to be doing the, the site work and the clearing of the beaver dam. We are having to hire somebody in, so we're going to build the ramp for him to get situated with the machine. Um, and we're hiring somebody to just bring the sheet piles in, hit them in where, where we direct them to, and then they're leaving, and then it's up to D P W to continually monitor and maintain this, this beaver dam and get rid of it.
Seems crazy to me. No, I understand, but like this, you know, how much does that cost? I mean, I know it's not really, it's not, or, but I'm curious. What are the taxpayers paying to deal with these, this beaver dam where, you know, ten years ago, it would have been, someone would have backgo solely picking a, taking, patent it down six inches, letting six inches out, patent it down another six inches and, and by the end of two days, it's done, you know, for a thousand dollars, what's, what's this costing them?
So, so to, um, I'm still waiting for quotes for the sheet piling. Um, the, the ramp would have to be done regardless in order to get a machine i- in a location that can access and reach any significant portion of this dam. Um, so, otherwise it would have to be done by hand. Um, so it's, I, I'm still working on that, um, I actually don't even have that yet, it was just this meeting was coming up and I wanted to get on it as soon as quick, as possible.
And, and the, the sheet piling is going to have a gap in between, is that the idea?
Yes, yeah.
And you're going to have like a, like a steel door, starts to let go too fast, you slam the door down and basically close off the hole?
Uh, so, so basically, we're just going to have a one foot opening in between or a one foot gap so that this way, uh, again, it won't be too much, at most, it's going to be a one by two foot opening, you know what I mean, considering the water's only two feet high. Um, that's, that's manageable considering the directly, uh, right behind this beaver dam is actually another stone dam with a pipe sticking through it, which is, uh, a twenty-four inch pipe. So, so we're pretty much on par with that pipe, so we're not going to overload that, uh, which is also another one of my concerns, because I don't want that to topple down, uh, because it's already kind of in bad shape, which is going to be an application in the next few years. Um, I, I, I got to replace that as well in the future, but, um, I, typically, I would agree if this was maintained, uh, and it wasn't still high, I, I would agree with that approach. But I think it's gone too far to where the potential for damage is too high and I'd rather deal with it this way. Yes, a little bit more money, but then save us on the back ending in the event that something does go wrong.
And what, what is, how many feet of sheet piling is it?
Um, it'll probably be about fifteen feet, um, or the, not even. So I'm thinking about two sections along the shoreline. Um, and what that'll do is that'll prevent the erosion along the shore, because again, that opening's going to need to be close to it, so the water's going to be moving pretty quickly, so about two pieces of it, they're about eighteen inches, so it'll only be about like six feet or, or five, yeah, four or five feet, then, then it's going to kind of swing around. So again, another four or five feet and then a one foot gap and then another two pieces of sheet piling right there. So it's not too bad, um, the original number that I got was less than five grand. Um, it wasn't anything ludicrous, which is why, uh, we were kind of going with this approach.
Uh, that doesn't seem terrible, I was thinking it would be a lot more than that.
No, 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 it, it's, it's less than five grand is the number that was verbally given to me by a contractor, I am still waiting on anything in writing as well as possibly obtaining a second quote as well, so.
How deep are they going, like ten feet?
As, yeah, as deep as we can get them to, to where they're structurally sound, um.
They're going to start with a forty foot sl- piece slab?
No, no, but, but, uh, I think these pieces of sheet piling, the ones that, uh, he's looking at are maybe like twenty feet long. They, they're not, they're not really long or anything like that, nothing crazy.
What, what happens if the operation piling the sheet piles and disturbs the dam and it lets go?
Uh, yeah. It, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't, I don't know.
Literally.
Yeah, it, it's, uh, again, just, just trying to be.
I just thought, I just thought it sounded like, you know, fifty, hundred, thousand dollars on a sheet piling machine, because I've seen them, I've worked with them, and they're big massive cranes, but I guess maybe for somebody's application, they got smaller stuff.
They do, yeah, this is pretty much like a, uh, crap, I can't.
Escavator with a.
Yeah.
Oh, it's excavator mounted?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, so it's, again, it's nothing crazy, which is why the pad doesn't need to be too big. There is kind of a pad already adjacent to the, this area, but there's no ramp to get down there, like, it's too steep for the machine to, to make that movement, so we got to kind of just build a little something.
And how do we keep this from becoming a problem again, not necessarily there, but everywhere else? Like, how do we, like, when do we say, hey, you know what, it's time to wa, you know, push these sticks to the side, you know, so we don't get a two foot dam and have to hire an outside, you know what I mean, like, where, how do we learn from this situation?
So, um, I, I also have a plan to hopefully also deal with this in the future, but I need the dam gone. So, um, I, I also have a plan to hopefully also deal with this in the future, but I need the dam gone. Um, I've been doing a lot of research on the beavers and measures that people are, are doing with some success, some, some more than others. But I'm not even there yet. My first priority is to get rid of this, this Beaver Dam because I, I had another call last week about a well collapsing. So it, it's, it's one of those things where, uh, it, it's, it's of my utmost priority right now.
Right.
Um, and then, then all this other stuff is kind of secondary, you know, I, I already have a calls in with some trappers to, to handle the, the beavers and possibly relocate or do whatever they got to do, um, all that kind of stuff. So a, a lot of stuff is in motion. I have plans, but again, this is the first step is get rid of the flooding.
Alright, anybody have any questions?
The houses, uh, Jim, they are primarily Monroe houses, the ones that would be at risk if this went wrong, right? I mean, I'm looking, the, the blanket Meadow and Trotter neighborhood, those are all Monroe houses. I think Huntington, was it, yeah, Huntington Road up to Sycamore is all Monroe. It seems like the areas that would be most impacted, if impacted, are Monroe residents, which that, that doesn't, that doesn't make it less important. I'm just, I, I was curious, like, is there a water flow issue? It would take a bit to get down Huntington Road into Newtown, I would say.
Well, well, that's actually the direction it's going. It's flowing north. So it's going towards like Newtown Electric, um, unfortunately. Am I able to share my screen? Cause I do have it on Google.
Isn't it sticks and stones down like?
Yeah, and it's Monroe up till Sycamore. That's what I'm saying. Like, I think Sycamore addresses, like, I don't know, I went to high school with somebody that lived on Fresh Meadow, which was up the road from Sycamore. So I think that's still Monroe, right?
Yeah, uh, yes, but yeah, yeah, so it's heading in that direction. Yeah, sticks and stones. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm just worried about, I know there's some like.
I mean, the, the residents of Monroe's houses are equally important. I was just cur, I was curious, like, if there's a water flow issue where you see it like, like flying down the road into Newtown, like.
Uh, it, 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 it won't fly down the road because the water course is definitely lower. But Gusky Pond is relatively wide. It's, you know, it's pretty big. Uh, and then the, the channel for the water course is, is very narrow. So again, it's, it's going to be flowing fast and it's going to be flowing hard, you know what I mean?
I did one on Turkey Roost a couple of years ago. And there was probably about three acres of water, like over a few acres, a couple acres at least. And it was in a pipe. They clogged up a pipe on the roadway or the driveway, I should say. And I started with, I, I grabbed a tree that was in the way of doing the work, so I pulled the tree down and I took the the 20 foot log and I used it with a thumb and escalator to try to push the stuff through. And then I lost that one and it wasn't working because it was going right through. I lost it and then I took the second next section, but I kept like two feet of, or three feet of, uh, the branches. I didn't cut them off smooth to the trunk, so it was more like a, like a thing, like a, I stuck it in and sure enough, it pushed it right through, the whole thing let go. And after the water came down like an hour later or something, I'm like, I wonder, you know, I'm looking for the log, you know, the log that I let, that was stuck in there. It was like two properties down, like this big lot, like 20 feet long, about maybe, you know, 12 inches or more floated like 300 feet or something down the way. It was pretty wild.
Yeah, yeah, so I, and, and, and like, if I had the luxury of a, a, you know, an existing pipe, to be able to kind of just clear that up to get it down, but fortunately, I think there's a four inch pipe in there. I, I see evidence of it, but it's clogged, it's, it's beat up. I think the beaver is definitely, and, and four inches isn't going to do enough. So.
Alright.
Yeah.
Good? All good? Thanks, James.
Thank you.
So now we're at the age of approvals. Cheryl, you want to just go through them?
I mean, any questions you have about them? And so, and so it was already on, they have, Public Works has a 10 year, um, permitted use as a right permit that the commission approved, I think before you came. It's more of an FYI. I want to let you guys know this is happening and, you know, just it's more of an informational purposes and it's being done under the 10 year permit that was already approved.
Yeah, our, our permit is for, um, maintenance and, and basically, you know, uh, anything that has to do with like the storm water and, and water, water and stuff like that for maintenance stuff. And, and, you know, again, we feel like this is a, is a maintenance activity because again, it's the Beaver Dam. So, yeah, again, it's just a kind of signif, it's more than just like a, oh, hey, we're just, uh, swapping out a pipe real quick. It's kind of a little bit more than that.
Yep, that's good. They're all covered. Alright Cheryl, you want to just go through the agent approvals?
Um, I don't have them all with me right now. So I had put them in the staff report if you had any questions, but, I mean, so 98 Benedict is enlarging a shed. 26 Lorraine, they're putting in a shed, I'm sorry, enlarging a deck and selling a shed. 118 Richards Drive is a garage addition over an impervious surface, existing impervious driveway. Um, 61 St. Van Hill Road is a pool, um, it's in Upland Review, but it's pretty far away. Uh, 66 East Village, um, they're repaving their driveway and regraveling their access drive across another property. So it's just kind of replacing what's there. It's more maintenance than anything else, but they get an agent approval anyway. Uh, 45 Pepperidge in ground pool. 55 Hannah Lane in ground pool as well, and that was one that the commission made, um, a determination that was a silt fence, had to be 25 feet from the wetland. We talked about inland markers, things like that. I actually just inspected that one today and the wetland that a pocket, it's not, it's, it's pretty much just grass. It's, it's a yard, it's a lawn, so it's very difficult. I'm kind of having a little trouble figuring out, I'm going to do wetland markers literally in the middle of the yard, like next to their pool, so.
Do they maintain it? Do they like cut it?
It's grass, yeah, it's just, it's lawn and, and that's just kind of what it was. And the inland wetland scientist, uh, was very diligent in their delineation and just happened to find it. It's like literally.
Did they add up a marker thing?
Well, they had, there's markers that they're supposed to put in, the whole, the whole right side of the property is all wetlands. So they're putting delineation in there, the middle of the yard. I just saw it today. I was like, oh geez, you know, so I might have to, I was thinking about omitting those because they're just literally in the middle of the yards. Like the kids would be falling over them, but.
I think we should, especially if it's.
There's, it's four, they've got like a, a whole bunch more going in along the side of the property. So I just happened to thank you, glad you brought that up that I should talk about them. So that was one of those that happened today.
Alright, general discussion, decision of other minutes?
Uh, I have received the minutes, reviewed the minutes and I have no concerns.
Um, let's do them, let's just do them individually.
You all have a thought?
Make a motion now.
Oh, you have a motion each?
Yeah, why not?
Am I clear to make the motion? Yeah, alright, um, I motion to approve the minutes from the Inland Wetlands Meeting on June 14th, 2023.
Second, the motion of Commissioner, uh, Kelly in the second from President Armstrong to approve 614 minutes, all favor?
Alright, I cannot, I can't be part of it because I wasn't part of that.
You're abstaining?
Yeah, okay, one, sorry, three in favor, one abstaining. When, when did you start? When would you?
Those are the first two meetings here, 614 is. Those are state film. You're the ones I don't promise.
Alright, there we go, okay, good.
Uh, for the, the meeting minutes for Inland Wetlands, uh, meeting on June 28th, 2023, I motion to approve.
Second, and a second from Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Armstrong, all favor?
Aye.
Alright, three favorite, one abstained.
Uh, for the meeting minutes, for the Inland Wetlands Meeting on July 26th, 2023, I motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Kelly, second, Commissioner Armstrong, all favor?
Aye. And for the Inland Wetlands Meeting on August 23rd, 2023, uh, I motion to approve the minutes.
Second, motion and second from Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Armstrong, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help and patience, Cheryl, finding the minutes.
Alright, so now we're out to the bylaws. You're going to highlight the revisions, right?
So, correct, so I actually, in your, in your packets handed out tonight is a, is a copy of the draft revisions. I had emailed them to you as well. Um, there's just two pages, um, page three and page four.
Now, let me ask a question real quick.
Sure.
What, what, what happened in 2018 to these? I mean, I know you weren't here, but.
Um, that means the last time you guys looked at them. I don't know what the revisions were at that time. I could go back and look, but those are those, those are the most updated, um, yeah, version. So on, uh, 7.2, it was, uh, two years is red and struck out and four years is blue and double underlined. So that was something the commission was looking into. And that's to go in, in, in line with what the town charter is.
Let's now, we're going to do, now do a four year.
Serve, service.
Service of, of, of the, of.
Members.
As off, as an officer, like chairman, vice chairman or.
A member.
Just a member?
Member.
A member of the commission.
Oh, okay, so, so this is commission membership.
Correct.
It's because it says declared elected. We're not elected, we're appointed. That's where I got.
I, I saw that too. Yeah.
So I don't know if that's.
Didn't we say we were going to try and get the chairman to be, make sure who was in line with everything else?
Yeah, but they're saying this isn't about voting officers.
This is the one.
Right. This is about our, our, our commit, our, what do you call appointments?
Membership.
Right.
It's funny, so I thought, I thought it was.
They're receiving a majority vote, the entire commission membership. Yes, you sure this isn't for officers?
It says right there, election of officers.
Oh, okay, so it's the wrong section. Okay, so then, hold on, let's put the regular full inch a lot of here, membership.
I think we're.
Okay, hold on one second. Let's actually look at number four. Number four, membership.
I think this is right, but it's stating like all our positions are for four years.
So membership is in four, is in section four. Oh, maybe, maybe it's like already compliance then. I must have been looking the wrong section. So membership in terms of members shall be as specified in the, in the above stated town chart code established, establishing the commission in a forementioned general statute. So it already has you guys down for four years. So you're supposed to be serving four years, maybe that's.
Appointments, you're talking about?
Right, right. Appointments.
Memberships, army been elections.
When you're, when you're appointed to the commission, it's for a four year term. So if you're, you're already on the line with that. So and if you don't want to change how long you are elected, then we can cross that part out.
Yeah, I think we were just trying to keep it in line because there was some confusion whether it was one year, two year.
Be fair with the officers.
Yeah.
So it must have been, okay, so, so right now it's two years for, for, for election of officers. If you want to keep that as two years, that's fine.
It's had an interpretation last year that it was every year, but two years is fine.
Yeah.
I think two years is fine.
So you want to keep it as is and just it's two years and then the membership is already in line with town code.
Who, who are the officers? I'm not sure.
Right, so we have an election. We're just here, it's just, it's what happened here, it's just in the chambers between us.
It's not, it's not a public.
It's like class officers in grade, in grade school.
Right.
You know, doesn't mean anything. Someone gets to speak more than someone else.
So we're going to switch that back and leave it at two years.
It's already there, you just, we just leave it. Right, um, and then I guess the other section we wanted to look at was meetings, which I hope this is the right one going to. Um, 8.1.
Yes.
So the seven to 6:30 and then the section added in, the second meeting of the month shall be canceled unless there is a continuation of an open public hearing or other extenuating circumstance that a majority of the commission members, of the members feel justifies holding said meeting. You can change the wording of that, obviously, I just put that in.
Good.
Is that, uh, that 6:30 time, I, I don't object to it. I know I was not a participant in the last meeting.
Right.
Is that, is that viable and convenient for like?
Well, I did, is that okay with the town?
I, I checked. They didn't seem to have a problem with it being bumped up, up by that, um, to that time.
Before us.
Right.
Right, I, I, they didn't seem to have a problem with that.
Do you have a conflict?
The conversation was.
I may, I may bring along peanut gallery, but I can handle.
That's awesome, in my opinion.
The conversation was, you know, six or seven, and we just compromised at 6:30.
Yeah, we'll try it 6:30 for, and it starts for next year.
Yeah, I think six, I would.
Six month.
And things.
6:30 seems reasonable.
6:30.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll give it a shot in point four, it's, you know.
So, um, the amendments to the bylaws and that's section 19. So how you, how you amend your, how you amend the bylaws? By two thirds of the commission's entire voting membership, only after the proposed change has been read and discussed at a previous regular meeting, which I would assume would be tonight.
Yeah.
Then next meeting, you can vote by two thirds, um, of the, of the five of you. Because you don't have, you don't have everyone here tonight, your entire voting membership. You could, you'd actually could amend it tonight, but you don't have all of you, so.
It's supposed to be the following meeting. We just, this, tonight was the discussion, wasn't it?
Correct, but it's, then it says accept the bylaws may be changed at any meeting by unanimous of the commission's entire voting. So since you're not unanimous tonight, it will go to the next meeting and you, and by two thirds vote, you can change your bylaws.
Animals, what's the status of filling in the rest of the vacancies?
We're working on, I think we might have two people for next, shortly.
Okay.
Norm being one of them, Jerry said he was going to try to talk to him in an interview this week.
Okay.
If he's interested.
He is.
Actually have someone from the other side that I, sorry, have to say that, but that I'm, that I'm actually going to recommend.
The party.
Yeah. I know someone that I'd like to ask them to ask them to join.
That's, we need bar bodies.
Alright, so now, I'm not done. Alright, so now we have, uh, public outreach, invasive species and informational meeting update.
So, um, I actually did speak with the invasive species removal expert, Christian Allen from New Canaan. Um, he does charge a $300 flat B, come and speak, so I would have to run that through the powers that be. Um, he suggested that Public Works be involved because, you know, if, um, if on the streets and the, um, the sides of the roads, it's not being maintained, then it's kind of, it's not very helpful. He says that it can get under asphalt, it can get into the bridges and can compromise, um, municipal improvements and things like that. So he mentioned that. Um, he gave the dates that he's not available in December, but he is available December 13th. Not sure how long the meeting would take, but.
That's our night.
That's your night. However, um, I was wondering maybe if you wanted to change the meeting time or something like that and maybe get, get the commission's business out of the way first and then start, and then have a hard stop and then start that. Unless you wanted to go into January, which it's the middle of the winter.
Possibly have to deal with, we might have to deal with the referral for, for, for St. Jude, that'll take five minutes, not even. And then we'll have town line auto body.
Right.
Which does seem like.
Tempting at this time of year.
Yeah.
There, there might be some other, there might be some other things, but, I mean.
How long do you think he needs to, to his?
How hard is it going to be to get to $300? Is that going to be an issue?
I really couldn't say. I haven't, I haven't done it before.
Idea on that?
It's not a lot of money, but who knows?
We don't have to take, we don't have to count for any money for anything. Why don't we push it into next year and find out, um, if, about the $300, let's try to get the approval for, for the money. Pushing, put it, push it into next year so that we can invite the public specifically.
We still couldn't invite them.
I will actually say, in defense of what Rick is saying, invasive species, a lot of them, there, there are things that start to grow and become a problem in the, in the early spring. And so if you do it in late winter, it may be more.
Read on everybody's mind.
Maybe more interesting.
Right, but it's really, well, I understand what you're saying, but we're not here to actually attack any significant pro, we're here to get educated about the thing.
Sure.
So that we have a, a thing, look, I, I, I thought it'd be great to get it done by the end of the year, right? It, it is a month, it's not, it's actually, it's actually five, today's the eighth, it's actually almost five.
I would only.
One here at all, one here all, but, you know, this guy has his downtime, I don't know if his downtime continues into January.
I think it probably does, I can double check with him for sure. I would just say that, um, in that vein, that there are a lot of holidays, vacations, December's a very busy month for people. So you want to, you want to have.
if you want, you want to have maximum attendance, do you want to have it in December, like except?
What are the other dates? Like, could it be like sometime in the beginning?
You have a, uh, is that?
That's on me, no. We don't, we don't have to do it on our.
No, you don't, no, you don't, but those, so those are the dates, do you want to have in the same, in the same week, you know what I mean, like, if you want to have?
I just wanted something like earlier in December, that might work for him.
Um, so the dates that he's not available, the sixth, the fifth, the eighth, the twelfth, the nineteenth.
Yeah, that's all. Holidays, it's.
No, no, I definitely wouldn't do it past the March thirteenth, I mean, the, 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 the December, whatever it is.
Isn't the meeting December seventeenth, Kevin?
Your meeting's the thirteenth, is that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I thought we said a public hearing, didn't we just tell the, uh?
I, I think, I think you said the thirteenth, no, next meeting.
Okay, okay.
So.
Yeah, we aren't sure, we, we aren't sure we get everything covered, you know, and I guess, have, have, have the other commissions and town, uh, departments been notified that we're doing?
Um, I, I hadn't even talked to him yet, I wasn't even sure what was going on, I didn't want to get anybody to.
Keith, it is our public outreach.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm inclined to wait, just, summer's a
Thank you.
difficult month, so.
I will say, yeah, I mean, I like, I, hearing about.
So does he, does he give us dates for next year?
I didn't have any for January yet, but I can call him tomorrow and get some, uh, he was very responsible, responsive, so.
So let's just say, let's say if January tenth was available. Would we say to have Cheryl Bucket with him, like tendively?
I just have to see.
So, so we don't have to wait until another month?
Yeah, I don't think. Council chambers is.
And then, oh, where are we now?
That's your meeting date, yeah, I'm gonna have that meeting date.
Yeah. You know, because again, too, like, even if we had to look, even if it turns out we picked the tenth, and all of a sudden, like, a ton of stuff comes in for the being in January, which highly unlikely, but if it did, we could just say, we're gonna make that, we're gonna, we could take twenty-fourth. So we could do, we have half an hour's of business on the tenth, like you said, we'll start early. Depending on how much attendance we plan on getting too, we might want to, you know, have enough time, you know.
We could always use our second meeting.
Second meeting to do the business of planning of inland wetlands, and then we do the, we hold the tenth. How's that, how does that feel?
So we prefer the tenth?
Yeah.
And if we have to, we push it to the twenty-fourth, is that what we're saying?
Push inland wetland stuff to the twenty-fourth, not.
Yeah, if we end up with a full agenda, if it looks like the agenda's gonna get really full, we'll just direct all the applicants that, look, our meeting's actually gonna be on the twenty-fourth for your hearing and your son.
What we can, well, say we're gonna go for an hour, but whatever we can get done, great, and then we're gonna, that's whatever's left.
Like a hard stop, yeah, that, that can be on the agenda.
That's what my question was for.
Probably, the other thing too is, maybe we should just actually, now that I'm thinking about it, so you're gonna, if we're, if there's gonna be town staff coming here, maybe we should try to do it, you know, I know some people, it might be a conflict, but maybe we should get started like even earlier, because while they're here.
So.
It'll probably make the attendance be better.
Assuming that you're, that you change your bylaws, you're gonna be starting at six thirty anyway, so you could, I mean, you could bump it up to, to six o'clock, is that what you're thinking?
Just for this one instance.
Sure, no, yeah.
Like, if everybody's leaving here at five, right, but some people are like, oh, you know, they would, they're, they're on the fence of whether they want to come, because but if we start it at the time, like when everybody starts to leave here, and everybody gets off the clock for the town, maybe it makes a little bit sense, we'll have like a half hour, you know, before a little break, maybe we'll get some refreshments or whatever, and, and then we can start it, uh, when, when do you guys block off?
Uh, we're done at four thirty.
Four thirty, so if we did it at five. I mean, it's one day.
Five thirty?
Yeah, but Ryan, are, are, you said six o'clock's difficult for you?
I mean, as a one-time.
For a one-time.
I can make that, what kind of thing?
Just for the one time.
If you told me we were at five o'clock meeting every week, then I'd be.
No, of course not, but just for one time, we could really make the, because I really want this to be attended, you know, that's my.
Right.
You know, so, so people that work for whoever in town is gonna want to come, and look, it's probably gonna be several, couple hours anyways, so it's not like you have to.
How long is he gonna present?
I do, I think this is the right move, I think that it gives us a better chance at public outreach. Because I do think it's a topic that's interesting, I, I have people that have come to me and asked me about things like, Japanese not reading, what, what are you supposed to do? I'm like, I'm like, you know.
Especially, be ready to policy based on it too.
Yeah, that's the other thing, it's our workshop, to write our policy, and then the goal is to have it, I know, you know, for us, if you all remember, but basically to set up a, a, a way for it just to be handled, and it could be just a set, like another application we have on the wall, where it doesn't, we don't have to really discuss it.
Right.
Anymore.
But there, just their people's presence here potentially is a benefit, I like, you think about the, uh, the reaction in the audience to what, the vote at Turkey Roost, and to me, that, that signifies that there is a misconception of who we are and how we operate, like that, that application was open for how many months? You know, and then somebody comes out like, well, you didn't give me a chance to talk, you know, so I think just people becoming aware of who we are and what we're doing, even if they're just by participants, is a benefit.
And we could certainly advertise it somehow or a way too, like, hey, you know, you want to know what to do about those crazy weeds in the yard, like, here's your opportunity to come in and learn something.
Well, the Conservation Commission, uh, has been good about putting articles about invasive species, and we probably do the same thing, uh, we've talked to Bill Bittar about getting an article or some note in the Monroe Sun, I think that's an effective way.
Yeah.
Conservation.
Yes.
Come on, Barbara.
Okay, um, so, just announcing, thank you, Barbara Thomas, through the Vila Road, Monroe, so, um, that's, that's why I'm here. So Conservation Commission is also planning on doing invasive management plan of some sort. It's been on my agenda for months or years, really, it's a topic I'm really pretty familiar with, I am not licensed for any pesticide applications, so I don't, not gonna get into that at all. But I did contact the Southwest Conservation District Office, uh, early in twenty twenty-three, uh, met with them in April, uh, I've been thinking about how to approach this, how to start to get some plan for the town. It's a big topic, as you probably realize. So I called them, uh, I, I decided that maybe we should start small, uh, and, Chris Sullivan, and I think, and Courtney Gilligan from the office, there's only three people in the office, so two of them, I think. We did a walk around, I thought, let's start at Great Hollow. Um, I'm also the, the person who does the gardening for the town, so I'm out there pulling all the weeds all the time, so I know where the weeds are, I know where the invasives are, and I can identify these things from, you know, half a mile away. So we did a walk around there and kind of said, uh, they're gonna put together a report, we kept getting down the priority list, because they had many other things they had to do this year, uh, Courtney said I should have it hopefully in a couple of weeks or by the end of this year. So they're doing a report that will be very focused on Great Hollow, that they are gonna talk about, so I think it could be a basis of, you know, something you can even maybe start to use, but it's gonna be, you know, how to identify the plants, how to address removing them, uh, for certain areas, what can be planted there to replace them, um, how to control erosion, there's gonna be a whole bunch of things. I have spoken with Missy Oroz, um, and, you know, obviously go back through her, go back through Phillips and Kurt LeWorts. Uh, I'm sure it's gonna go through Parks and Rec Commission, I mean, they're, I know this is gonna be a big, uh, process to get, uh, involved, but, um, you know, I, I, that's in the works, so I wanted to say that, and also, I'm hoping that we can work together, I mean, this is not something that we're going to say, hey, inland wetlands, this is what you're gonna do, I, I give regulations that I don't understand.
We watch you, we watch you guys here for this.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the intention was to invite any commission or town department that could benefit. That's why I said, like, you know, that's why I'm saying after hour or so, these people will be, you know, they might not be required, maybe they will be, I don't know, but we're gonna do this for everybody in the town, and we're, our goal is to, is to write off in a way so we don't have to deal with it, it could be done systematically with an application at the desk in town hall, so we don't have to have these discussions, because they always seem to be the same thing. And we really don't, like, what are, you know, we're not chemical people, and like, you, so, so, but, we want to be able to, any knowledge, we want everybody else to get a benefit from it, and I even said, I think previously, I didn't write it down, but it should be in the recording somewhere, that we were gonna prioritize like four things, and one of them was to definitely deal with our issues with it, and then, and then have like, you know, a question, like a workshop type of thing, so you guys, you know, we all, you know, if you have some questions, you want to gain something from it, you know, once we kind of deal with our business of it, we want to open it up and let everybody, you know, participate, and have, you know, open discussion, and ask the professional questions. So that you guys can figure out maybe your policy that you want to do, and whatever questions you may have, so, yeah, we want you here. Um, we want, uh, Parks and Rec here, we want the commit, Parks and Rec Commission here, like, whoever, whoever, as many people as possible, we can fill the whole place up for all I care.
Because it's a misunderstood tough, people really don't know what it is, and I'm seeing more and more of, uh, Japanese knot weed around, people don't, they probably go, oh, how pretty, this is just arrived, must belong here, and that'll just eat your whole yard, and then it's just terrible stuff, and mud boards everywhere, so, um, I also wanted to do, um, more presentations for next year, like through the library, I've done presentations there, so I want to do something on invasives, and, you know, what they are, and, you know.
Great. This is all for public, this is all public too, so, you know, that anybody can come to this, but they're gonna, just, you know, they're gonna be the last of the priority. Right, this is really a function for commissions and departments.
Yes.
To help with their policies and their education, so, but we're right, let's open everybody, this is what our outreach is, right? So, in five years since I've been here, so long, it's like the first time that anything, you know, we could think of, you know? Yeah, and then we probably should ask for like like a refreshment budget too, I guess, who, who, who do we ask for that?
Refreshment budget?
Yeah, like, so we can get some, you know, water or whatever drank, so.
I mean, I, I've never, again, I've never done it, I would say, you know, town council, and, and then they go through, and then.
Like, so, so if we have to request money for this professional, the, the person that, I assume that's what you're gonna do, right?
I'm, I'm, yeah.
Request the three hundred dollars, but who, who would you, who's the person you're gonna talk to next?
The first person I'd probably go to is finance, and I'd say, how do I get the money?
Who's that?
Finance?
Yeah, who's that person?
Um, I would just go to Chris or Heidi in the finance department, I would say, who do I talk to about getting money? Um, is it maybe, whatever budget is, we're gonna try to get the money out of our budget, or maybe the town, what, has a supplemental budget, and they, we can however, however they want to disperse it, and I'll, and I'll let them know how much we want to have. As far as refreshments go, I'm not sure, like, where we'd have them and what we'd have and all that, but. Have a food truck out and, and.
No, it's not crazy, but, you know.
They could be optimistic though, about getting that money.
Is that? I, I'm just saying.
Let's be optimistic.
Well, we'll get a response, we'll get a response from departments, we can ask, you know, the commissions, who's coming? We get a head count, at least like.
Well, yeah, I care.
We're trying to make it a little different than just a meeting, you know? Well, that's why I want, I'm.
Favorite January. They never do, yeah.
But, but at least we'll give them a shot.
Yeah, right, I'm optimistic.
But maybe, you know, maybe Missy wants some of our staff, maybe the, maybe the public works wants some of their staff to go, because it's really, so, so we should be able to get a head count. Just say like, what, a hundred bucks, go to Donuts, get some doughnuts and some coffee, and, you know, whatever, that's all I'm thinking, like, make it a little special.
Okay.
Make up for that though, I think that may be an issue.
It's not that much, we're not talking, we're not talking thousands of dollars or twenty-two. Keith's gonna make it.
That is just.
I'll make a phone call. What's that?
Anyway, by monthly quarters, whatever you guys, we're gonna do something, I just want us to not operate.
We want to be in line.
Yes, exactly.
Thanks for. Well, hopefully, have more dialogue, you know, figure out who's coming and whatnot, and, and get, promote it too, like, you know, whatever you have, I, like I said, the more the merrier, we want to, we're gonna, like, we're gonna have an agenda to, to, to get what, the business done, but hopefully we'll be able to have, you know, you know, some public, uh, dialogue as well.
I mean, maybe now is the time to ask, we just had a, uh, an election process where people were more engaged than historically, and people should care about outreach, you know, they should care about bringing the public in to interact, so ask for the money now, do it, do it soon.
Oh, tomorrow?
It's top of people's minds.
Tomorrow?
No, for sure, I can, I can, for sure, fight out the process.
Yeah.
For the approval.
Sure, absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, so.
Okay, this, um, one other point, I made it to the last, and said, uh, so, five days, Hill Road. I would, I would be in favor of letting them know that maximum fine could be, you know, I would, I would give them an opportunity, say, look, we're serious, maximum fine could be such and such, I, I want some strong words.
So in my, my season correct, I will, I will be referencing state statutes and things like that with the fines, yeah.
You did, you did a nice job inviting them the first, first time. Obviously, they're not, not, not going with it.
Yeah, it's gotta be, it's, you gotta be.
You want it to be forceful.
I want to be assertive, yeah.
This is like, this is serious, this is like.
Blatant.
Yeah.
Disregard.
Right.
That's, uh, yeah.
It's not a, I didn't know, it's.
That's, no, it's not even like, you know. Getting a permit to do something and then going beyond it by twenty feet, you know, you did come, you did get it, but you took a little degree with your permit. This is like literally trying to fool somebody, which they did. It's crazy, like, this is like. But, but it's not even like they took it and they, look, if they had come up with this plan, right?